Good morning and welcome to the November meeting of the Board of Trustees at the University of North Carolina. I'll ask Secretary Ramsey White to please call the role.
Thank you, Chair Pryor. Mr. Ballantyne, Mr. Blaine, Mr. Bullet, Mr. Bronner, Mr. Bryan, Sevens, Mr. Everett, Dr. James, Mr. Kalapa, Mr. Cottis, Mr. Minkins, Mr. Patel, Mr. Pryor, Mr. Turner, and I am present. Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Secretary White. Trustee Bullock is going to be joining us by Zoom in a little while. He has a conflict at the moment, but he will be joining the meeting. I'm now going to read the Statement of Ethics. As Chair of the Board, I must remind all members of their duty under the State Government Ethics Act to avoid conflicts of interest and appearance of conflict of interest. If you know of any conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any matter coming before the committee today, please identify it at this time. And seeing none, I'm now going to call, we have a special guest with us here. And I'm going to call on trustee Jen Evans to introduce our special guest before we get going with the meeting agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This morning, we have Aaron Mattson, Coach Aaron Mattson with us. Aaron graduated from our university 11 months ago with a bachelor's degree in media and journalism. One month later, at age 22, she was named head coach of UNC Field Hockey, the youngest head coach in all of Division One athletics. Last Friday, her team, our team, beat Duke to win our seventh straight ACC title, earning the number one overall seed in the NCAA tournament hosted here on our campus starting tomorrow at noon. Aaron is the best to ever play her sport. She's the all-time scoring leader in UNC history, in ACC history, and in NCAA tournament history. She was a first-team All-American all five seasons and the only student athlete in any sport to earn ACC Player of the Year five times. She led our team to win national championships four of her five years. Three of those were undefeated seasons, and she earned National Player of the Year and Honda Awards after each of those three seasons. Her career record at home was 46-0. She was 12-0 in ACC tournament and an astounding 15-1 in NCAA tournament play. During that run, she was four-time Academic All-ACC and ACC Scholar-Athlete of the Year her senior year. Aaron played 101 games in a Carolina jersey, and 34 times she scored the game-winning goal, twice to win national championships. She thrives under pressure. She says it's an obsession. Her peers describe her as the most dedicated athlete they've ever known. She is fearless and selfless. She has navigated the transition from teammate to head coach with dignity and grace. Given the interest in her journey and the excitement she has generated for her sport and her team, they regularly play in a sold-out stadium, standing room-only overflow crowds with fans sitting on the hill. Our chairman attended a game recently and saw this for himself. So, thank you, Chair Pryor, for inviting Aaron Mattson to join us this morning. I know of no one on our campus more deserving of our recognition and our commendation than Coach Aaron Mattson.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Jen. I just told her she said some things I didn't even know were facts about me, so I appreciate it. I usually have a good coaching voice, but today I'm glad to stand in front of the mic and be in front of all of you and for all of you. It's an exciting time of year for everybody. There's baseball in October, there's basketball in March, and for us, there's nothing like field hockey at Karen Shelton Stadium in November. So, before you guys get started with a lot more important things than I'm going to speak about, I figure I would share some things that excite me. And Jen touched on one, the most obvious one probably is winning. Recently, in a couple of interviews I've gotten, the question, "Does it get old?" And I think to myself, "Well, you obviously have never interviewed a Tar Heel before." And what kind of question is that? It is the most addicting obsession there is on this planet. It's what we are meant to do. It is what we are born to do. It is why we are able to sit in rooms like this and have conversations like this and be surrounded by people like we are every day. I will never get sick of it. I know you will not either. It is what Carolina deserves, and it is what I will work for each and every day. The second thing that excites me is relationships. I thrive off of them. I thrive off of connections. Again, I know you do too. It's one of the biggest lessons Carolina's taught me ever since I became a Tar Heel, ever since I committed here, ever since I stepped foot on this campus. I could never go out and play 1 versus 11, and I've won the trophies that I did. And I know you guys can't sit in this room alone and be nearly as productive as you're going to be after I stop talking. But we lean on each other. We have confidence in each other. We allow other people to have confidence in leaning on us and learning from us. And I know what we do is more powerful because we do it together. We have a saying, we say sometimes at the field, "One plus one equals three." You can't do everything that you can do alone. You need to lean on each other and do it together. And everything that you create is because you do it with the people around you. I met Karen Shelton when I was nine years old. I saw her about 100 yards away through plexiglass, standing in her power pose. And I said, "That's the woman I want to play for one day." I built a relationship with her as her being my inspiration. I built a relationship as being her recruit. I was lucky enough to be a player for her. And now, what better mentor that you all have given me than the best to ever do it? And someone who loves Carolina so deeply like all of us. That leads me into the third thing that excites me and the reason, again, the main reason we are all sitting in this room together. The love for this place, Carolina, Chapel Hill. I have it on my chest today. I couldn't be more in love with it. It is what motivates us. It's what drives us. There is something about this place, and Tar Heels know it, but the Dukies know it, the Wolf Pack know it. It's something magical that you enter, that you feel when you enter this bubble of this town. There's no other fan base like it. There's no other student body, alumni network, Board of Trustees. There's no other teams. That look is beautiful and that feel is empowered when they put on the Carolina blue. And we are so grateful. So, I know we will keep winning. I know it deep down, and I know it won't just happen. I know we work for it, and you all know that. But I know it will keep winning. And I know we'll do it because we do it together, and we do it with our relationships, and we'll continue to build new ones because that's exciting as well. But I know it will make that love for Carolina grow even more, which is crazy to think about and crazy to imagine that that's even possible. But it will happen, and it will happen because of you. It will happen because we care so much, because we love so much, because we want to serve our student athletes and our university so well. And we will be better off because of it. So, thank you for putting me in a position to be one of those people, to build new relationships, to continue winning, to share my love and make it contagious and keep it contagious with the rest of the world for Carolina. And I couldn't be more proud. And I will represent this place to the best of my ability every day for the rest of my life. Thank you.
I'm tempted to adjourn the meeting and end on a high note. I just would like to say, Coach Mattson, that last night, we honored former athletic director Bill Kobe, who made a very bold hire of a young coach by the name of Anson Dorans, who 21 national championships later is still coaching today. And I'm so excited for what you have done this year. And everybody, the game is at 12 o'clock tomorrow, right? Karen Shelton Field, thank you so much. I'm now going to move to approval of the consent agenda. And we have a number of items on consent agenda for approval this morning. I will read the list, which now includes approval of open and closed session minutes of September 27, 28, 2023 meetings, university affairs, ratification of Tier Two appointments, Attachment B, approval of revised faculty salary ranges for the Eschelman School of Pharmacy, the UNC School of Nursing, from the Budget, Finance, and Infrastructure Committee, Advanced Planning Spending Authority for Chapman Hall, Port Hole Alley redevelopment, designer selections for the Pitt Area Stormwater Improvements, the Translational Research Building, the Endowment Fund Annual Report, the lease renewal, the Renaissance Computing Institute lease renewal, property acquisition by lease for the Frank Porter Graham Institute, fiscal year 2425 proposed campus tuition increases, plan and fees, fiscal year 2425 proposed Carolina Housing and Dining Services rate plans, and the External Affairs Committee appointment of the WUNC Board of Directors and the nomination of Marvin Burke Coons. Having read the materials listed under the consent agenda, is there any item that needs to be removed to the discussion portion of either the open or closed session agenda? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve all these items. Thank you, trustee. Thank you, trustee Patel. Can I get a second? Thank you, Vice Chair Turner. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. It is approved. As I just referenced, last night, I'm going to roll into my remarks. We're going to keep going. Last night, we had the Davie dinners, and I want to give one update because I think I referenced that in the history of the Davie dinners, former board chair Dwight Stone was the first person to attend while his daughter was actually in labor. And the baby was delivered this morning at 7:00 a.m., and everybody's good. I want to thank Coach Mattson for being here with us today. And as referenced, the field hockey program here serves as a culture of excellence, as does the women's soccer program under Coach Dorance. And I want to recognize how difficult it is to win at something for such an extended period of time. And thank you for all your hard work, and it serves as the model for the university. I'd like to introduce several new members of the board today. At our last meeting, new trustee Patrick Ballantyne had a wedding that he had to attend and was not here, and I would like to welcome him to the board officially. Patrick is a 1987 graduate and lives in his hometown of Wilmington. He's a 30-year practicing attorney and president of the government relations firm Ballantyne Company. He has great experience in Raleigh that will benefit this board. Also, we have Brad Briner, 1999 graduate, a Morehead Scholar, originally from Dallas, Texas, but has lived here in town for the past 28 years, which is a tremendous advantage in some ways. And in others, it's a disadvantage because you're always gettable, Brad. So, he spent his career in the asset management world, including an early stint at the UNC Management Company. And he now runs the Bloomberg Family Office. I'd also like to welcome Vimal Kapala Kalapa, a longtime resident of Washington, North Carolina, who is in the hospitality industry and brings great experience to us on lots of things here at the board. So, welcome.
People always ask me, "Am I a guy that studied in UNC?" My children did, but I had my valve change in the heart in UNC. So, every time it beats, it says UNC, UNC, UNC. Just wanted to say that Dr. John Vavale did this fantastic team, and I'm grateful to Michael here. Michael, stand up so they can know who you are. His systems were all there when I went for the valve change, and I was thinking, "God, it should not go blank while my valve is being changed." That's it. I had no other way of saying it. So, I am an UNC graduate. In my heart, it is there.
You are going to fit in great on this board.
Can you suit up for the field hockey team tomorrow?
And at our last meeting, I also, I had introduced new trustee Jim Blaine from Raleigh, and then also introduced Jen Evans at our last meeting. I just want to add one thing I had learned since then, that Jen held a faculty appointment in our economics department and taught an undergraduate honor seminar on entrepreneurship in Silicon Valley for several years when she was in California. And I think just your teaching experience is very helpful for this board. So, thank you for letting me know that. In my opening remarks at our September meeting, I recognized the heroic work of our university police department under the leadership of Chief James. And I spent a few minutes expressing why so many of us truly love this place. Coach Mattson also referenced that in her remarks because as Development Head Mike Andreasen has said, "It's almost an irrational love that all of our alums tell him." It's why all of us on this board serve as stewards of this great place. It's why we willingly volunteer our precious time and why we are so passionate about the potential of this university. It's our love of this place that will drive us all to do the best we can over the upcoming new year to keep Carolina as the leader in higher education. It has been and will be well into the future. Leading, that's what this institution should be about. After all, Carolina is the nation's first public university, and we've demonstrated through the years how important leading is in a variety of ways, in research, in the classroom, in athletics, in the theater. Wherever our students and our faculty take us, we are making an impact in North Carolina, in the nation, and around the world. So, it stands to reason that America's first public university should also be the first in freedom of thought, views, conscience, speech, and most especially, civil discourse. In a time of stark division of perspective and opinion, oftentimes highly contentious, we have an historic opportunity to lead our nation through a first-of-its-kind school and curriculum, the School of Civic Life and Leadership. Chancellor Guskowitz, Provost Clemens, and Dean White are all helping to ensure the School of Civic Life and Leadership will position Carolina as the preeminent institution in the nation in promoting free speech and open debate. This is the sort of leading that should come natural to Carolina. It's what we do. It's who we are. The stakes are enormous. The promise is immense. Public higher education has no greater purpose, and Carolina is leading the way. This unique endeavor is truly a Carolina calling. Over the next several months, we will be working to ensure that Dean White and his team of faculty have all the support and resources necessary to build a solid foundation for skill through a rigorous academic discovery process. I commend him for the work he's done to date and look forward to seeing a new dean hired by year end. I realize this is ambitious, but those who have spent careers in the private sector know well that great things can happen between Thanksgiving and Christmas. You just have to work to make them happen. People across this country are watching closely to see what Carolina does with this new calling. They know that we are uniquely positioned to offer real academic leadership and civil debate backed by institutional courage to show the country how it can and should be done. And our country and in many places around the world, this is desperately needed right now. We need to all learn how to listen better so that we can understand each other better, and through that exercise, build respect and trust with one another while embracing each other's differences. This is hard work, but you know what? Leadership is hard work. Carolina has led before, and we are leading again. I ask that you all join in this important endeavor, this Carolina calling, and let's lead together. Thank you. I'll now call on the student body for his remarks. Student Body President Chris Everett.
I have to do these from my seat today, so hopefully that's okay with everyone. Apologies, I didn't have the UNC brand guide, so I made this all last night. I tried to market as well as I could. But it's still good to see you all. Thank you, Chair, for allowing me the opportunity to speak again. I'll be doing something a little differently today. Have a presentation to walk through with you all. I've been doing a lot of reflection about the most pressing needs of our students on campus, and I kept coming back to one thing, our facilities, particularly the student union and our recreational facilities. And so, I'm going to speak about those today. Next slide, please. So, we saw the slide deck by Sanjik Nofman yesterday, and I won't spend I won't spend too much time on the numbers, but I took the liberty of highlighting the total fees mandated by our university for full-time undergraduate students. For an undergraduate student body that exceeds 20,000 students, our university is charging fees that total $1,732.46, somehow with the expectation that this will support all the needs across our campus. And as you can see, our total fees fall behind every other university partner in our system. And our closest partner is NC State University, coming in at $2,000, almost two and a half. I recognize the value of keeping such a small total fee, but I worry about what this means for our facility and the student body in the coming years. As an example, this is the Tally Student Union at NC State. The building offers students a home for a wide array of different things, all that are outlined here, some including fraternity and sorority life, student government, the Women's Center, and leadership and civic engagement. And this is our student union, the Frank Porter Graham Student Union. I love this building. This is my offices. Has so many different food locations and a huge meeting and event space for students. But while well-loved, this building is not enough to support the growing needs of our campus. The union right now is facing a long list of much-needed deferred maintenance requests that desperately need our attention because by meeting this need, we can allow the space to become a better resource for our students. And this is Charlotte Recreation Center on the campus of the University of North Carolina at Charlotte. I had the opportunity of seeing this in person, and it was in all of what the students had there and what I believe that our students should also have. The building is five stories, has a boxing space, sand volleyball courts outside, yoga rooms, a basketball course, an indoor track. And on top of this, it was paid for by student fees and efforts promoted by student government. Took about three years to be resurrected. And these are our recreational facilities, the SRC in the Ramshead. I also love these, and I was actually briefly employed at the SRC at one point in time, but our students deserve exceedingly more from our recreational facilities. Organizations like Campus Recreation and others have conducted extensive research on this matter. So, I'm hoping that this just serves as amplification of all the research and advocacy that they've done. But from my view, UNC offers too many amazing club sports and workout classes, and we have too large of a focus on athletics to justify these facilities for normal, everyday students. So, that's very, very concerning. Carolina is a flagship university of the UNC system, where the flagship university of the state and a lighthouse for the world at large. As we all know, the rankings from the US News, we're ranked number four in top public universities. And to maintain a brand and caliber of this status, but then fail to offer students the appropriate resources and facilities to justify this excellent ranking is troubling, and that comes with us. So, I love this university. You all know this, but I know that a name can do but so much. And so, as student body president, I always find myself hearing of countless stories of folks and students being excited to come here because of our name, because of the brand recognition of the university, but having a rude awakening in terms of what we're actually offering them when they get here. And the student union and our recreational facilities are just two examples of the ways in which some of our student body are really counting on us to be better. So, I recognize that there are lots of policy changes and heavy lifting that go into having conversations such as these. And I'm grateful that our university has such a strong commitment to affordability and the people of North Carolina. As you all know, financial accessibility is something of concern for myself as well. But again, our name and branding can do but so much. And so, now it's up to us to have these conversations about a very real student issue. And I can make this guarantee to you all in this space, I'm willing to be a part of any and all conversations with the folks on this board, the folks in this room about these issues. There has to be a way of maintaining our commitment to affordability while also examining how tuition and fees and philanthropy can be employed as tools to provide students with the facilities that they need and they deserve. And so, before wrapping up, I'm going to spend the rest of my time speaking about the collection of presentations given at yesterday's school board meeting. While I wasn't able to be there, I believe it's important to take the time to highlight some folks across our campus. This is Eliam. He's a really good friend. He's a Mordecai scholar from the Class of 2024, the leader of the Black Mordecai Affinity Group, a former member of the Dean's Advisory Board, president of EESA and the Black Entrepreneur Initiative, a Shupert Ambassador, an IDST major through the Applied Sciences Department. Being Makerspace employee, he reinstated the National Society of Black Engineers. He's a leader in the Organization for African Students' Interests and Solidarity. He founded Franklin Street Market, and he's a TA for the Applied Sciences and Economics Departments. Joanne Obioma, Class of 2025, BA in Public Policy and Psychology with a minor in Social and Economic Justice, president of the Black Student Movement, 3.8 GPA, serves on the Chancellor's Commission for History, Race, and a Way Forward, co-founder of UNC's first Black Pre-Law Association, member of the Carolina Union Board of Directors. She served as a legal intern for the Douglas County District Attorney's Office. She's a member of the Theta Pi Traptor and Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, three times Dean's List candidate, accelerated research scholar, and she was voted BSM's 2023 Most Active Member. Christopher Williams, Class of 2025, Bachelor of Arts in Peace, War, and Defense, minors in Entrepreneurship and Conflict Management. He achieved the highest rank in Boy Scouts of America and Eagle Scout, to be specific. He's an Agora Fellow with the Program for Public Discourse. He serves as undergraduate chief of staff for student government, is an Honors Carolina student, UNC Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Fellow, UNC Apple Service Learning Leader, and UNC System Association of Student Government Fellow. He's also the Chick-fil-A Leadership Scholar, excuse me, former UNC Diplomacy Intern and former SECU Public Fellow. Barbara Tillman, also UNC Class of 2025, also a Dean's List candidate and Honors Carolina student. She's spoken about the importance of voting alongside Vice President Kamala Harris, Senator Raphael Warnock, and Senator John Ossoff. She's been featured on CNN and C-SPAN. She founded a nonprofit for empowering young voters and reported for ESPN's College Game Day for UNC's football season opener this past fall. She served as a two-term co-director for Civic Engagement Outreach Services Department of Student Government, interned with the US Senate under the secretary, is a North Carolina Fellow, and a board member of the Honors Carolina Student Association. And lastly, yours truly, UNC Class of 2024, BA in Public Policy and minor in Media and Journalism, Honors Carolina student, Dean's List, and the 2023-2024 Harvey Beach Scholar. I've been called on by the White House and the US Department of Education for the National Summit on Equal Opportunity in Higher Education. I'm a former intern with the North Carolina General Assembly, the Office of Governor Roy Cooper, Sheriff's Strength, Brady United, NCDPI. And I'm currently interning with Sage Publishing, interrupting off all nicely, I'm the third Black student body president in a row at our university. So, I wasn't here yesterday when we had the two concerning speakers, but honest, I'm glad I wasn't. The individuals that I just shared with you all are nothing less than extraordinary. And we earned our spots at Carolina, not because of the color of our skin, but because of the contents of our hearts and the will to make our university a better place. We are not average. We don't need handouts, and we definitely did not have to flunk out when we came to Carolina because we didn't have the appropriate tools, because at the end of the day, we made them for ourselves. And so, when we have our meetings and make decisions about who we allow to speak to us, it is my hope that you see me, you see us, Eliam, Joanne, Christopher, Barbara, sorry, sorry, Barbara, and myself as well. And we choose to bring individuals who don't question our worth, our mission to Carolina, and our places at the tables that we fought to make possible for ourselves. And so, I speak for all of us, all five of us, when I say this. We are young, we are gifted, and we are black, and we too are Carolina. All that I am or ever will be, I would honor him. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that, trustee Everett. Now, I'm going to call on Lauren Hawkinson, the Graduate and Professional Student Government President, for her remarks. Lauren?
Thank you, Chair Pryor. Thank you, trustee Everett, for those remarks. I'm dreading following those up here. Good morning, everyone, and thank you so much for your time today. For new members of the board, my name's Lauren Hawkinson. I'm the president of the Graduate and Professional Student Government. I'm a fourth-year PhD candidate, working toward earning my double Tar Heel status. I graduated with my master's in Exercise and Sports Science from Carolina in 2014. I worked as an athletic trainer in collegiate athletics prior to coming back to Carolina in the fall of 2020 to pursue my PhD. This experience as a healthcare provider has really driven my research and implementation of ACL injury prevention programs in the high school setting and my focus on health and well-being in my position as the GPSG president. When I spoke with you all in September, I focused on graduate and professional student well-being. I primarily focused on mental well-being and the various aspects of graduate and professional student life at UNC that make an impact on that mental well-being. And I've been extremely encouraged by the conversations that I've had with administrators since about addressing the issues that I've raised. And I'm even more encouraged by the actions being taken by both graduate students and administrators alike that will ensure that we move this beyond talking about it and into tangible results. So, I'm really looking forward to developing these further over the coming months. Today, I would like to continue to speak about graduate and professional Today, I would like to continue to speak about graduate and professional student well-being, but shift gears a little bit from the mental to the physical. However, I do recognize there is a connection between mental, the mind and the body, especially with regard to resilience and stress. In fact, there is a 2023 study by the National College, I think it's the National College Health Assessment of 2023, and they found that there were statistically significant differences in both resilience and stress among students who met the criteria for being highly active adults and those who did not. And as you may expect, students who were highly active displayed higher levels of resilience and lower levels of stress. One of the members of my cabinet, Director of Health and Wellness Jake Diana, has done extensive work with Campus Recreation and the Student Recreation Center, or the SRC. And he's graciously shared some statistics with me, specific to Carolina, to share with you all today. Campus Rec conducted a survey of students this fall, and respondents overwhelmingly, 90% stated that utilizing the SRC or Ramshead supported their overall well-being. 73% stated it supported their mental, mental health, and over 60% stated that using the facilities supported their ability to manage stress and their self-confidence. And 40% stated it supported their academic success and just general sense of community. These are all wonderful outcomes for engaging in physical activity. However, it is worth noting that in this same survey, 86% of respondents felt the facilities were too crowded. Over 50% of respondents stated the wait times were too long, there is a lack of sufficient equipment, and just report general overall dissatisfaction with SRC facility. And Chris shared some, some pictures of that with you in his presentation. As you can imagine, the general theme gleaned from this survey was that there's a need for improvement of the Campus Rec facilities. And like Chris, recently I've been able to visit some of the other UNC system schools and see the facilities that they offer their students and was blown away and quite frankly, a little embarrassed by how far behind we have fallen. My goal today is just to bring attention to one area, which is Campus Rec. That's important to students and perhaps one of those aspects that, of campus life that factor into students' attendance decisions. And if you haven't been to the SRC, I encourage you to, to go over there after your meeting today and just poke your head in and take a look, just to see the state that it's currently in. While I highlight Campus Rec, there's also a general concern among students about the upkeep of the university and its ability to provide desirable resources. So this includes the fitness center and having a large enough fitness center to accommodate the student population, offering adequate equipment there, but also modernizing our student union and physical accessibility for students across the university. And like, like Chris stated earlier, I recognize Carolina's obligation to serve the, the people of our state and doing so by keeping costs low, but I think serving the people of our state goes beyond keeping costs low at the university. We also need to continue to offer students the opportunity to learn from world-class faculty and researchers, and so we need to keep those people here. We need to effectively disseminate that research that they conduct across the state to those communities who will benefit from its implementation. We are continuing to expand our academic offerings through the development of the School of Data Science and Society and the School for Civic Life and Leadership to ensure that students are well-prepared for their careers and life in general beyond Carolina. We're also the university of national champions, as evidenced by Coach Mattson earlier. And we're number one in best value of, of public higher education. And I would like to see us keep that ranking. And so we should absolutely continue to do all we can to keep cost of attendance down for students, both graduate and undergraduate. However, please know that there is support from students, both resident and non-resident, to increase that cost, to ensure that the quality of our education, the facilities, and the health and well-being resources meet the standards expected of our flagship university. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. Let, let me ask you one question just real quick. Is it so, and, and I was listening to what you said, Chris. I happen to have several friends that have freshmen here, and they all have made reference to the, the workout facility being subpar.
Yes.
Okay.
It, yes, it's something that we hear quite frequently. I think Chris hears that as student body president. I hear it as graduate professional student government president, but also in my role in Exercise and Sports Science. The Fetsor Building, which is where my office is based out of, is connected to the SRC. And so I, I hear quite a bit coming in and out, and it's near impossible to get in there to exercise. There's like a 45-minute wait time for equipment. It's dark. It's almost, it looks kind of like a dungeon, honestly. So there's lots of concern.
Okay, thank you very much, and I appreciate that. And you have the board's attention on that.
Thank you.
And I'll now call on the chancellor for his remarks.
Great, thank you. Good morning, and thank you Chair Pryor for your remarks earlier. I couldn't agree more. Carolina must lead, continue to lead in all of these areas. Coach Mattson, thank you for being here. Congratulations. I remember the day that Bubba Cunningham came over to my office and he said, the search committee is done. They've done their work. And we've got the top finalist here and wanted to be sure that I was good with it. Said she's a little young. But are you good with that? I said, this is a no-brainer, Bubba. And so I think we saw that today with your remarks and incredible early success. So thank you for saying yes to that invitation several months ago and go heels this weekend. I know we're going to do great. I want to thank President Hawkinson and President Everett for your remarks, for your advocacy for our students. And Chris, as I stated yesterday in response to one of our speakers assertions about our admissions practices, you and every one of our students here at Carolina has earned their way to Carolina. And we lead in providing the success initiatives that ensure that they'll thrive here at Carolina, not survive, that they will thrive at Carolina. And we have great data to support that. So I really appreciated your remarks. I also want to take an opportunity to welcome Trustee Briner and Trustee Kalapa. I know I speak for my leadership team and I, we, we very much look forward to working alongside you and this entire board to lead this great university that we love. And I look forward to spending a little more time over the next few weeks with you as well. And I want to take an opportunity to welcome Dedrick Carter, Dr. Dedrick Carter, to Carolina as Vice Chancellor for Innovation, Entrepreneurship, and Economic Development and Chief Innovation Officer. We are so excited to have you joining our, our team and leading our innovation efforts. I'd like to invite Dr. Carter, a double MIT graduate in Electrical Engineering and Computer Science, and most recently the Vice Chancellor and Chief Commercialization Officer at Wash U in St. Louis, to the podium to say a few words. Dr. Carter?
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to have the opportunity to speak with you. I would never correct my boss, but I'm a triple MIT.
Triple. My apologies.
No worries. I, I say that, and I, I say that with pride, but I'm also born and bred into Carolinas. Born in Kannapolis, North Carolina, raised in South Carolina. I joke that I'm Carolina-born, Carolina-bred. When I die, I'll be pushing up daisies as Carolina dead. And one of the things that I would like to share with you just briefly is, in my title is the word innovation. And innovation, the, the joke that I use is that everybody talking about innovation ain't doing it. Similar to growing up, people would say, everybody talking about heaven ain't going there. And I, I shared that with our chairman a bit earlier, and, and I think that's true. And I don't say that in a, in a negative way. I just say I have very distinct thoughts about what it is to be innovative. And it, and it is not sort of necessarily just a blue sky, isn't it a cool word that you add on there? There are very distinct elements that one can say about how you bring innovations together. Several years ago, probably about a decade ago now, I had the privilege of, of being at the American Academy for the Advancement of Sciences with Dr. Chudambram, who is the Science Advisor to the Prime Minister of India, where we're talking about how one catalyzes in a room of 300 people, how one catalyzes innovation in a region. And someone in the audience raised their hand and said, what is innovation? And, and I thought, well, here's a heckler. We can figure out how to handle those. I've been in enough classrooms. But we stopped and said, you know, that's actually a really good question. We throw this term around often, what does it truly mean? And in real time there, we have a definition that I actually think is, I'm quite partial to, partly because I helped to create it, is when one has, one finds economic, strategic, or societal value in fundamental knowledge. Fundamental knowledge is free or deeply subsidized by the government. Thank you NIH, NSF, DARPA, DOE, and those other, other areas. But value creation is not. And so when we think about the true profit motive, the economics part of it is capitalistic. How do we make money off of those things? That's the economic value. The social value or the public good is really thinking about how one has better scale or better impact from those things you have, and that's, and that's value. And there's something in the middle. It's sort of the Zappos doing well while doing good. And those are the areas that I embrace when I say innovation. And so there will be, there will be metrics. There'll be, there'll be ways for us to say, are we, what are we doing now? What does success look like? And what does winning look like in this environment? And how do we, how do we do that? And I'll be starting off my listing tour in the coming days to speak with people all across the, the university and our stakeholder community to understand that. We have wonderful rays of light here, and my goal is to try to figure out how to harness those, cohere them, and get a better impact, an outsized return on our innovative efforts. I'll say two more things and I'll sit down. The, 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 years ago, I was leaving Washington and going back to, I planned to go back to MIT, and my wife and I decided that we were going to make a, a detour. We were going to start our family and we decided we were going to go to St. Louis, Missouri, to Washington University. And there are a lot of people in Washington that asked me, why did you go to, what's happening in St. Louis? My response there was something special. And when I made the announcement that I was going to come to Carolina, I got a similar question. You know, what, what's happening in, in Chapel Hill? And I had a really good friend of mine who sent me a text and he said, I'm guessing something special, right? And I, I will tell you that in the five months since we made that announcement, my wife said the faculty, faculty of the medical school, the way that this community has embraced and sort of reached out and said, how can I help? Is overwhelming in a very good way. And if you want to understand what the superpower is, I think the thing that powers innovation and the impact that we're going to be able to harness is really being able to look at that as a unique characteristic of the community in which we find ourselves. So I'm very much looking forward to, to working with you. And I'll leave you with, there's this great poem by Rudyard Kipling called "If". And if you ever take a, you don't have any reason to, but if you ever take a class of mine, you'll know that I frame the world by saying, if you can keep your head when those about you're losing it and blaming it on you, if you can trust yourself when all men doubt you, yet make allowance for the doubting too, if you can wait and not be tired by waiting or being talked about, not dealing lies or being hated, not give way to hating and yet not look too good or talk too wise. You can make a heap of all your winnings and risk it on one turn of pitch and toss and lose, and start again at your beginnings and never breathe a word about your loss. If you can sit with thieves, not lose your virtue, walk with kings, not lose the common touch. If foes nor loving friends can hurt you, if all men and women count with you but none too much, if you can fill the unforgiving minute with 60 seconds worth of distance run. Yours is the world and all that's in it. And this is where I depart a little bit from Kipling because I have daughters. I would say, you'll be a woman, my daughter. And he said, for the time, you'll be a man, my son. And I also say, at that point, you're probably ready to be an entrepreneurial innovator, right? And so that's the, the mindset that I use to do the work. I will, I was asked when I, when it came to Wash U by the chancellor to make sure that he wanted someone to wake up every day thinking about the things that I was responsible for. And I did that. And I promise you, as long as I occupy the chair as Vice Chancellor of Innovation, Economic Development, and Entrepreneurship at, at Carolina, you'll have someone that wakes up every day saying, what are we doing? How can we do it better? And how do we get greater impact in this area? Thank you very much.
Well, I will add the same thank you and gratitude for saying yes to our invitation that I did for Coach Mattson. So welcome aboard. A lot of work ahead of us, but you're going to do an incredible job. So thank you. I also want to take an opportunity, as Chair Pryor has already done, and that is to congratulate last evening's Davy Award recipients, Terrence Burrows, Bill Kobe, Edith Hubbard, who I have to say I enjoyed sitting with last night at dinner. Edith was responsible for me landing my first research grant back in 1995 when I had run over to the Office of Sponsored Research at 4:40, when it had to be timestamped at 5 o'clock, 5:00 PM on a Friday to get sent off to the funding agency. And she said, it's formatted entirely wrong. And, and she looked at her watch, she said, but we're going to get her done. And, and we did, and I got the grant. It was for a whopping $20,000, I think, but a lot more followed. So at any rate, Edith was fun to sit with her last night. Chuck Lovelace, Jenna Rae McNeil, and Dwight Stone. These are all legends here at Carolina, and it was a wonderful evening. Chair Pryor did a great job of emcey in that event. And so thanks to all of you who were, who were there. And while we're offering up congratulations, I want to take this opportunity to recognize this board of trustees for their recent award from the American Council of Trustees and alumni known as ACTA. The board received the Jerry L. Martin Prize for Excellence in College Trusteeship for its, and I quote, unwavering commitment to academic excellence, academic integrity, and freedom of thought and inquiry. So congratulations and thank you. In my remarks today, I want to focus on some of the issues and challenges that we're facing as a community and then highlight some of our work to fulfill our commitment of serving the people of, of North Carolina. First, as you well know, our world has been rocked by the war in Israel and Gaza, which began on October the 7th. A month later, we still remain concerned about the events these attacks are provoking, both locally and globally. And as I said in a campus message last month, we will not stand for acts of violence on our campus. While we have a commitment to allow groups to express their opinions under the First Amendment, we all deserve to live and work on our campus safely without fear of being targeted by hate speech. Twice this semester, we've shared information with our campus to make sure our community understands how to exercise these rights within our policies and laws. And I'll be honest with you, and I know I speak for others in the room today. I've not been, I have been disappointed by some of the messaging that, that we've seen on our sidewalks and in social media posts that target and is hurtful to members of our community. It's not helping us to build our community together and to better understand the complexities of the conflict in the Middle East. We just sent another message to the campus this morning, reminding everyone of our expectations. Having said that, I'm very proud of the ways that so many people are responding to support our community. Members of our leadership team, the Provost's Office, deans, and I've met with and listened to so many students, student organizations, faculty, staff, members of the surrounding community representing a variety of perspectives and concerns. And I've appreciated all of you who have reached out and talked to, to me and members of our leadership team about what you're hearing and what we could be doing better to support our community. We have focused on direct engagement to listen and ensure members of the community that resources are available to support their safety. We have found that these conversations are probably more meaningful and effective in addressing the needs of our people on campus than any one email message can accomplish, but it's a combination of both of these that I think are important. This approach aligns with the principles of neutrality that this board, the Board of Governors and the Legislature have committed to in support of the free exchange of ideas and perspectives. And I also want to commend our campus police for maintaining order on our campus and diligently pursuing reports of, of any unlawful activity, which I'm grateful to say have been few. Our faculty and students are leading, engaging, and thoughtful discussions and debates across campus. We're fortunate to have one of the best centers for Middle East and Islamic Studies here at Carolina. We have an incredible Center for Jewish Studies called the Carolina Center for Jewish Studies. And as you well know, we have something that I like to talk about being uniquely Carolina, which is our Program for Public Discourse, where we model civil discourse. And I think it's, it's great that we have these three resources to come together. We, we have some of the leading scholars in the country on these issues. And we have an opportunity to lead in educating and modeling civil discourse on this issue, helping society better understand these events and the challenges they've created globally and locally. And there is, of course, more to be done, but as I said, I'm proud of the way our community has stepped up. Second, I understand the concerns. I've heard from members of this board and others about the new state law regarding matched distinguished professorships being limited only to the STEM disciplines moving forward. I've been engaged with the system office, as have others on the leadership team over the past two weeks, to better understand this change and its implications. And while we're grateful for the longstanding support for distinguished professorships from our donors and the legislature, like many of you that I've heard from, I too was disappointed to learn of this recent change. However, these recent changes in state funding won't diminish the value of distinguished professorships at UNC Chapel Hill or our commitment to continue raising private funding to support distinguished professorships across all disciplines here at Carolina. We're fortunate to have a variety of funding sources and donors, and the university will continue to have a variety of professorships to support outstanding scholarship in the arts, the social sciences, humanities, and other non-STEM. arts, the social sciences, humanities and other non-STEM areas. We have received guidance from the system office that assures us that we can continue to have distinguished professorships in all areas of study. And there was some confusion about the interpretation of that language initially. We appreciate any funding that the state is able to provide to professorships at Carolina, and we'll continue to look to private funding to fill any gaps in matching support. At Carolina, as we know, our students in all areas of study enjoy a comprehensive education that provides them opportunities to build well-rounded skills to serve as leaders of our, the leaders of our future. Humanities, arts, social sciences and STEM fields are all part of our rich academic tradition and professorships at Carolina will continue to reflect that breadth of study. Now, let's turn our focus to our mission of serving the state. And I want to thank those board members who were able to join us at university day last month. And I want to conclude my remarks by sharing with you some highlights from the Tar Heel Bus Tour with some photos from that wonderful journey across the state, uh, just about two and a half, three weeks ago. Both of these events, university day and the Tar Heel Bus Tour allowed us to see the incredible work of our university to partner with and serve the people of North Carolina. This year was our third bus tour since becoming, since I became chancellor in 2019. COVID got in the way and we, we missed two years. But each year I'm amazed and re-energized by our faculty, our state and the partnerships that we have built. We traveled from the mountains to the coast, meeting the, with citizens of our state who are having an impact in communities across North Carolina. At our stop in Canton, we witnessed the ways our universities partnering to help develop the economy in a town devastated by their mill closing as a result of, in part due to the pandemic. We saw the work of the Carolina College Advising Corps and the C-Step Program in Hope County. We visited the Museum of the Southeastern American Indian at UNC Pembroke. And Senator Lee came to our stop where we saw the work of the North Carolina Collaboratories' PFAS Research. From square dancing in Asheville, and I hope there is no video, uh, to lunch at Wilbur's Barbecue, a restaurant owned by Carolina alumni, we saw the wonderful culture and history of our state. And I do want to thank Chair Pryor for recommending Wilbur's. And we do have a gift for you from Wilbur's. So.
Thank you.
The Tar Heel Bus Tour gives our faculty the opportunity to learn from the people we serve. Since the past two tours, we've now have a better understanding, a better sense of the impact the bus tour is having on our campus. We've awarded $100,000 in grants to interdisciplinary projects by Tar Heel Bus Tour alumni on issues ranging from reducing opioid deaths in North Carolina to teaching social emotional learning to children with disabilities. We've heard from faculty who will say that I better understood the impact of interdisciplinary collaborative work to solving hard problems and addressing the needs within our state. And that, another person said, I was able to connect with undergraduate students in my classes in a new way, having seen several of their hometowns. This is why we do the Tar Heel Bus Tour, to give our faculty an appreciation and opportunity to partner with the communities our students call home. Now let's take a moment to watch a video showing the ways we're making a difference.
The Tar Heel Bus Tour is is awesome. My bus tour experience really emphasized for me how deeply proud I am to be a Tar Heel.
The bus tour is about reconnecting with the citizens of North Carolina. It's about taking our faculty and staff out to see the towns and cities and communities that our students call home, but also how they might think about their research having an impact. We had two buses, close to 90 participants. I think we touched down in about 20 towns.
We took a stop in Canton, which was incredibly impactful for everyone on our bus.
In Canton, we've experienced lots of trials and tribulations in the past few years. Most recently, the mill closure. It's awesome to have people standing in front of you, wanting to know your story. It's really important for people to understand that UNC reaches beyond the Chapel Hill's town limits or even county.
Right now, there's some assistance that's coming from campus in a couple of different ways. The NC Growth Program out of Keenan Flagler, helping answer some of the really complicated questions related to rebuilding. North Carolina Policy Collaboratory, funding some incredible projects. One has to do with some environmental remediation work that needs to happen around the paper mill area.
I'm excited to be able to have Chapel Hill as a resource and to know that we're all in this together.
We have about three parades in the span of a month on this stretch.
Hosting the Tar Heel Bus Tour was such an honor for us. It's just great to have them in rural North Carolina, in Whiteville, in Columbus County to see what our needs are. Here at The News Reporter, we are partnered with the Hussman School. They provide coaches, they provide opportunities for us to learn. It has been an incredible experience that we just could not get in any other way.
The bus tour really helps to connect in real time with real stories and real people the way that the university really is an integral part of our state. And it makes me extremely motivated to think about what I can do to help facilitate that.
So thanks to those of you who were able to join us on, on parts of the tour. I'm grateful to the team for all their work to make this tour happen, led by Lynn Blanchard and Anna Rose Medley. I don't know if Lynn and Ann are in, in the room today. Please, Ann, stand up. You deserve a round of applause. This could not happen without Anna Rose and Lynn. They took about two days off, I think, after we got back and started working on next year's bus tour. So stay tuned. But during one of the stops on the tour, we heard about the wonderful partnership with UNC Health Sciences at the Mountain Area Health Education Center known as MAHEC. And so today we're bringing part of that tour right here back to Chapel Hill. And we're going to ask that Lizzie Mechanic-Hoser, the CFRE Regional Development Officer of Western North Carolina and Director of Philanthropy for MAHEC, and Dr. William Hathaway, Bill Hathaway, CEO of MAHEC, to jump up to the podium and talk about some incredible work that they're delivering for rural healthcare and saving lives across our state. So Lizzie and Bill, thanks so much for being with us today and take it away.
Thank you very much. It's a privilege to be here. The, the, the interplay of your remarks and the, my talk today, I think is going to show you just exactly what Kevin was talking about, how this university really impacts our community through partnership and collaboration. By the end of this talk, I hope that you'll all recognize what MAHEC is, what the partnership with UNC and UNC Health Sciences that MAHEC does, not just for Western North Carolina, but for the entire community. I'm a cardiologist by training and I'm accustomed to, uh, putting forth my disclosures prior to any conversation. And I have a disclosure, which I bring reluctantly to the room, is that I trained at Duke University. And, and, and I think by the end of this talk, you will see why I am so proud to wear the tie, even the socks, and, and, and why it's just such a privilege and a pleasure to, you know, share some of the, the spirit and enthusiasm that we have here today. We're located in Asheville. This is our campus. It looks like we're in the middle of nowhere, but this is actually in the center of town. We've been on this campus since 2011 and we are a health, area health education center. The subtitle of this talk, which I've given on multiple occasions is, what the heck is MAHEC? And, and we are an area health education center at our origin. We were founded in 1974. This was a federal, private and public partnership whose purpose was designed to improve the supply and distribution of physicians across underserved areas, particularly rural areas and, but not exclusively also in underserved urban areas. We serve the circled region, which is a 16 county region, but we have impact across the state. The state program office is located here in the School of Medicine, run by Hugh Tilson and others, and we're super proud to be part of this organization broadly. That being said, once you've seen one AHEC, you have seen exactly one AHEC. They are located across the country and they meet the unique needs of their individual communities and have evolved in, in concert with that kind of a difference. Our core mission at our foundation, and it's changing over time, is to recruit, train and retain the workforce needed to take care of North Carolina. We focus in Asheville on rural communities and we are focusing on people who have lesser access than most of us in this room to resources. We want to transform the delivery of rural healthcare and we want to transform the health of our region. And we do that through our academic and educational mission predominantly. In order to train the workforce, we have to provide patient care, as you'll see. And we are a federally qualified health center and a community-centered behavioral health center. Those are federal designations which afford us better pay on our Medicaid and underserved patient population. And then we also have a huge role in community and public health, which was really evident as we responded to COVID over the last few years. We start early. Many of the AHEC programs are designed to expose our state's youth, particularly in underserved communities, those who live in rural communities and a minority populations to healthcare as an opportunity. The likelihood that you go into healthcare is greatly influenced by the number of people in your family who are in healthcare. These, these kids don't have that opportunity. So we expose middle school, high school and beyond, including internships through undergraduate education. Our training history is long, and I want to emphasize a couple of different things as you look at this slide. First and foremost, note that the first 22 years are condensed in the top line on the far left. We have had tremendous growth since we affiliated with UNC School of Medicine in 2009. We started as a family medicine residency training program. Once you completely are undergraduate medical education, you go on to do specialty training in residency, and we were a family medicine program. We have since added a host of different programs. I won't read through all of them in the interest of time, but I want to highlight that we also added partnerships and affiliations with the UNC School of Medicine. We started in 2009 with four third and fourth year students. And then now this past academic year, our training 35 in each of those years on our campus, exposing them to the clinical part, the application phase of their training. We added the School of Pharmacy in 2011, Gilling School of Public Health in 2018, where you can now get a joint, a master's degree jointly through UNCA and Gillings. And then we, in 2001, partnered with the School of Dentistry to train students in a very practical way during their fourth year on our campus. This is the breadth and depth of our training. A few years ago, for our graduate medical education training, a few years ago, we were just under 150 residents in training. We have now crested at 217. We have general surgery and psychiatry residency programs, which are designed to populate general surgeons and psychiatrists in the region. Four of our residents last year took jobs with Mission Health, which is exactly what we wanted to have happen, recruit, train and retain. We have five of our internal medicine residents who will be joining that health system this next year. We've been very successful in that regard. We have rural programs in Hendersonville and Boone, and then a variety of fellowships, which you can see scattered around the outside of this honeycomb picture. We are a partner. We, our job is to collaborate with other people. We are an independent 501(c)(3). I have my own board to whom I'm responsible. We have our independent budget. Our budget comes in large part, in some part through state appropriations, also through clinical care and also through grants and contracts with, to provide GME. And we partner with health systems across our 18 county region, including two UNC facilities in Boone and in Hendersonville, as you can see here. But we're agnostic. We, we want, um, I used to think that we were Switzerland. I don't think that's the analogy. Switzerland wants everyone to leave them alone and just give them their money. We are more like an ideal United Nations where we want to bring people together for the betterment of our community and still will take your money too. We need that desperately to fulfill our mission. Huge amount of patient care, I won't belabor this, except to point out that in our FQHC status, where we get added reimbursement for Medicaid populations, critically important with Medicaid expansion, Medicaid has become our best payer. And we will be serving over 280,000 patient visits this next year, 280,000. It's really a large clinical platform across these disciplines, internal medicine, psychiatry, dental, OB and family medicine. We not only serve the health and wellness of our community through the traditional care delivery that you imagine, but we have a benefit to the economic health of our communities, of our graduates that we've tracked since 1978. 52% stay within the state. That is a remarkable number, particular since we train primarily primary care specialties. And those graduates contribute dramatically to the economic health, as you can see here. This was a study we did, did in 2018. Of the 52% who stay in the state, 81% stay in Western North Carolina. And if you look at the numbers that, of the family medicine providers in our community, a third of them have some affiliation with having trained at, at MAHEC. So we're very, very proud of, of fulfilling that mission and, and transforming rural health. And then again, the economic benefit, if you look at one physician who's brought to our community, it results in tax dollars, salaries and total economic input, output of about $2.1 million annually. So now to the partnership that we have with UNC, that's sort of the foundation of MAHEC. Again, I said, we, we partnered in 2009 with the School of Medicine and added the other schools, as you see here. We also partner with the other members of the university system in, in our region, Western Carolina and Appalachian, Eastern Carolina, to some degree across similar programs. There are rural areas, so we share a lot of similar challenges in meeting the health needs of our community. And so there's a lot of partnership there. And then we also, of course, partner with the community college, colleges in our area. The Health Sciences Campus at MAHEC as a formal entity was established in 2018. It was in part or large part funded by a state appropriation and it's governed in two ways. One, we have a UNC Oversight Board that we held our annual meeting just this last week at MAHEC. And we're really grateful to have the deans of the schools in attendance with us and Chancellor or Provost Clemmons and others join us for that session. And then we have local leadership, including the leadership at MAHEC who, who run the campus. This is a picture of our building, which was funded through state appropriations and opened in 2019. I'm going to run through very briefly here and then entertain some questions, the four different programs and what we're most proud about of each of these programs. And I want to emphasize, I've just been in my role for 21 months and two days. Not that I'm counting. And so all that I talk about here is something that I have been offered the opportunity and privilege to, to inherit and shepherd and be part of the team. This is the work of many, many people on this campus and many, many people on our campus. What I'm most proud about for the School of Medicine is that 62% of our graduates from our program up there go into primary care. That is at the 90th percentile. We need to train primary care people in rural areas to meet the access needs, which is a major problem. And 13% of those stay in state. It's not as high as our residency programs, but it's very high numbers. When you look at the School of Pharmacy, we focus on ambulatory care and our providers disproportionately choose ambulatory care versus hospital-based or other research jobs. Not that those others aren't important, but that's not our mission. We need to serve our community by training the workforce, and we're doing that with the School of Pharmacy. The School of Public Health is a place-based, uh, uh, program. We train people who are predominantly already in the workforce versus Gillings here, where they're more traditional students. We think we have opportunity to incorporate new students, but our graduates are working on the problems that they're learning about. And so it's a very practical based application. And again, it's jointly with UNC Asheville. And then with the Adams School of Dentistry, a new program, we take four students each semester, put them in sort of a real high intensity, high workload boot camp. They get tremendous amount of clinical experience. For those of you who don't know, you can graduate, or most graduates from dental school go off and practice. This is an opportunity for their skillset to be highly developed before they go out in the real world. And we're proud about that. And then we feel that we're the niche for interprofessional collaboration, right? We're small enough where we can collaborate across the silos of these individual schools and that we're large enough where we have an educational opportunity to give people a really great experience. And this is one of the main goals. And this is one of the main goals that I set for our organizations, to get all of our students involved in interprofessional collaboration who are on our Health Sciences campus. I really want to highlight this, and it's particularly relevant in context of what we heard earlier about innovation. We have been exceptionally privileged and fortunate to have partnered with Eschelman Innovation here from the School of Pharmacy. They came to us with a vision for a venture studio hub. We have a really major problem across the country, but particularly in Southern Appalachia related to opioid use and abuse. And they came to us through the collaboratory, who helped donate significant amounts of funds for this project, and we're super grateful for that. Helping to look at what the problems are and addressing this patient population and what some digital health solutions might be that could be turned into backable enterprises. And so we had a venture studio in partnership with High Alpha Innovation, and out of that came two potential startups, one of whom they've already hired a CEO and a chief technology officer and are moving forward. That's Goldie. The purpose of the Goldie digital software is to take patients when they're in that golden hour of vulnerability post-opioid overdose and connect them with the available resources at the moment when they're most vulnerable or most accepting for going into treatment. It's a digital solution which will be, I think, potentially transformative in terms of capitalizing on that golden hour for patients. And we just learned from Jeff Warren this last week when he came up, that they're going to be contributing additional dollars for future venture studio sprints. Very excited and grateful about those opportunities. You've seen these pictures already. That was me in the Tar Heel blue there. That's a lot of blue, and I'm proud to wear it. And super excited about that. We've had tremendous growth over the last eight years, and this came from state appropriations in part, and also from our partnership with UNC Health Sciences. When that partnership happened, our growth took off, and we're super grateful of how that's allowed us to impact our community. I'm going to finish there by saying, this is our 50th year, and 2024, we'll be having a year of celebrations. We hope that we can get you up to the campus so you can see that the work that your university is doing in partnership with us and others in Western North Carolina is having a really meaningful impact on the health and wellness of our community, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you so much, Dr. Hathaway. And before I open it up for any questions, I just want to say congratulations on, after that long career at Duke, now finally making something of yourself as a Tar Heel. And do we have any questions here? Trustee Briner, please.
Thank you for your comments. I was struck by the 48% of your graduates who do leave the state. When you talk to them and you study that population, what do you learn and how do you improve that?
That's a good question. You know, part of it is job availability and part of it is where your family is and a variety of other issues. What we actually focus on is how we can keep, increase that number. One of the focuses that people have put on primary care is to recruit people from their early age, take them from Franklin, take them from Silva, take them from Little Washington, and then put them through the training program and then send them back to their communities. I personally, having grown up in rural Wisconsin, think that while that's a valuable strategy, the real strategy for recruiting and retaining is improving the work, the opportunities in those communities. It's a sense of really significant isolation. You don't have the collegiality you have when you're in a large organization. You don't have access to technology and information systems as when you're in a large organization. So what I think has been successful for us is that partnership with Mayhak, putting our fingers out in a spoken hub model into the community. And so if we can continue to do that, I think that'll bring the highest yield and return on our investment that way. We are partnered with the Keenan Charitable Trust. We have rural fellows. We take young people who just finished their training and are taking their first job in a rural community. We buy 20% of their time and then bring them back to Asheville for additional training or leadership work or a variety of different things. Our retention rate is over 93% in the first five years for people who go into those small towns to practice.
For the benefit of the board, I'd just like to say that I first really learned about what you all are doing when Vice Chancellor Development, Mike Andreasen, had told me that he had just come back from a trip and tour of the campus, and that one of his best development people was up there at Mayhak, and that would be Lizzie. And I said, he said, you really ought to go up and see it. And it just so happened that I was going to Asheville on a vacation a week or two later, and I said, well, I'm going to be up there. So ended up going and seeing it and was just blown away. And there's a common perception that I learned a long time ago when I first got out of school and spent some time in Western North Carolina, that people in Western North Carolina tend to feel as if the rest of North Carolina don't know that they are there. And that has maybe gotten a little bit better since 1990, but it's still prevalent. And I thought that it would be important for everybody here to realize what is happening in Western North Carolina, because anyone who has family up there, Mayhak makes a tremendous difference in their life, and it is something that everyone knows how important it is to that part of the state. And those of us that are in the Piedmont may not fully appreciate it. So I hope this was informative for everybody.
Yeah, I think those are nice comments, and I appreciate that. And I just want to wrap up again by thanking you all for the partnership. We have done good work for 50 years, but you saw the inflection point when we partnered with UNC in terms of the impact we have in our community. And we are the largest not-for-profit. We have real significant challenges in delivering rural healthcare. We have opioid use disorder problems. We have access to care problems. We have maternal fetal health disparities that are, that as the largest not-for-profit, they're ours to take on, and we can't do it alone. And the partnership with UNC benefits us in so many ways. I could spend another hour and a half just talking about that, but I just want to express my thanks.
Okay, if there are no, yeah, round of applause. Thanks for all you're doing there. Thanks for hosting us on the Tar Heel Bus Tour and continuing the great work. So I think with that, my remarks are finished and great presentation here, and turn it back to Chair Pryor.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hathaway and Lizzie, for being here, and we're now.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Before we go to committee reports, I think we need a better next step on Trustee Everett and Lauren's comments on facilities. Curious if you have thoughts and reactions to their comments, but as important, what's our plan? What's our next step? Where does this sit in our roadmap going forward?
Thank you, Trustee Turner. We, I think it's time that we bring the master plan, the campus master plan, back to the, to the board. It was approved. I'm trying to think, there may be no one still on the board that approved that back in 2019, 2020. Nate, is that about the time? So Nate and I have talked about this. As you know, we are getting closer to hiring our new Associate Vice Chancellor for facilities and operations to work closely with Nate and Gordon and others. I think that as soon as that, well, I think we need to bring the master plan back to the group here. That individual is going to help us, you know, help lead us through that. But there are some changes that I think need to take place in terms of reprioritizing some of the building opportunities. But there's no question that we need more recreation space, more, we've looked at the campus health space and what opportunities there might be there for improvements. And so I, I think we need to move forward with this. And Nate, do you want to add anything to that in terms of?
Maybe what we should do is do that as a group visit in January. Because it is, it's surprising to me, some of my friends that have freshman students, it's sort of a universal among their concerns. It's like, why isn't the workout stuff better than it is?
I mean, we brought the Ramshead facility on, online. It's probably been about 11 or 12 years ago, and that still feels new, that building, but it's a nice facility, but it just does not, in terms of the capacity we have, as we're growing our student body, we need more recreation space. And the student union likewise, it seems like it was just yesterday that it was renovated and reopened. And it's now, I don't want to say become obsolete, but we need, we need more space.
Yeah. Trustee Patel.
You know, we spent a lot of time yesterday talking about tuition fees and increases and all of that. It was interesting to hear both Chris and Lauren say that the students don't mind the increases if they're getting a return on that investment. And that's the critical part of this is, you know, we're focused, we're capped in a lot of different ways, but we're still way below on the fee side. I agree with you. We've got to get something done. I mean, the unions looked, I mean, I remember when I was here and some of the facilities still looked the same, and it's there. And looking at all the beautiful shiny things across the way, especially up in UNC Charlotte, I live right up there, you drive up there, and it is blown up and it continues to get done. So I think our students at Carolina deserve just that, if not better.
Perhaps to, I don't know how this would work with Robert's rules, but we were discussing the fee increase, and it was specific to the union. I hear what you're saying about the strategic plan and the building plan, but is there an in-between with the student fees? Because I would imagine you could use that to update or kind of an in-between before we discuss the.
Let's hear from the student body president. Yeah, so I've been a part of a lot of different conversations with the county union board of directors. I know the fee that was approved, I'm very grateful to have the leadership of TJ Edwards, the current board chair. And a lot of the fee, from what I'm aware of, of course, is deferred maintenance. The roof is in really bad shape, like students could be hurt if it continues to go on that way, as well as HVAC systems. But as well as that fee was primarily used and dedicated to increasing the wages for student employees, because the union workers inside the union aren't paid at all, like what's equitable and appropriate. And some of that fee specifically was for that purpose, not as much as to getting a new union or those initiatives. But the current chair, TJ Edwards, is great. He's been looking into those plans and those resources. I'm happy to loop you all into those conversations, but as it stands, the fee I was approved yesterday was primarily for, yeah, just the union and for like increases in wages for our student employees.
Well, I think I'd like to schedule at our January meeting a tour of the facilities, because I personally have kind of wanted to do that, and I just haven't done it. I can tell you with great certainty that if you go, you try and make the drive in front of the, you know, the student store and the bell tower at any time between four and seven, it's almost impossible to get through in the exodus of people trying to come and go out of the workout stuff. So it would seem that we, you know, just the sheer capacity would be off by some margin. So let's go and look at it. But everybody's listening.
Yeah, I know Nate wanted to say something, and while he's walking to the podium, it's funny that you mentioned the pedestrian traffic that blocks that. I mean, the line of cars is backed up, but it seems like a mile long. We have a, we had a preliminary design, and I know this because I was department chair in exercise sports science at the time, and the ramp, you know, that facility is attached to Fetter. And some of those early designs, this goes back probably 18, 20 years ago, was to actually build a ramp up from a new building there on the corner in that wooded area on the side of Fetter by Stadium Drive, to take a ramp, a pedestrian ramp up over South Road there to eliminate what you're describing. So I remember. Yeah, I mean.
Chair Pryor, I would point you to the conflict of interest policy.
At any rate, Nate, you might have to find, this is probably buried, but that there are drawings and designs that Anna Wu and her team worked on years.
I am familiar with some of those, and we can resurface that and certainly bring that forward. And I appreciate Christopher and Lauren's comments on the need for rec and union and the board's interest in this topic. One thing to note, it's on our mandatory student fees, you heard an interest from the students in being able to increase those fees. We have a 3% statutory cap on how much you can go up across all those fees. That's equivalent to about $50 per student. When you use that and you look at what kind of debt that can leverage, you're probably in the $20 million range in that area. So it's, it's helpful, but it's probably short of overall dollar target. Are there, are there things we can explore to, is there relief on the 3%? Is there a creative way to think about that capacity? We have had debt service fees roll off, actually, union debt service fee roll off recently, about $40 worth that we didn't kind of get credit for, and maybe there's a way to think about that more. Again, this would probably require as a working group and some more conversation around just thinking about some options on this point, if this is something that collectively we'd like to explore further.
Trustee Evans.
I really appreciate your advocacy. It's exactly why you're here. If you could prioritize for some of the projects, or even if there's low-hanging fruit of some things that could be done absent tearing down a building and rebuilding it, which will take a long time and more money. If there are things we could be doing to improve that now, whether it's new equipment or some other initiative, provide that too, so that we can get going on this, and it's not something that is five years from now.
Any other comments?
If not, we're going to run through some reports, and then we're going to go into closed session. So I'll now recognize Trustee Codis to give the report on the Strategic Initiatives Committee meeting yesterday.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Chair Pryor, and Board Trustees' members. This report covers items discussed during the meeting of the Committee on Strategic Initiatives yesterday, November 8. Committee heard a presentation on free speech, civic education, and academic transparency from Jenna Robinson, President of the James G. Martin Center for Academic Renewal. You have three resolutions that were introduced yesterday to be discussed and adopted at a later date. They are not for moving at this time. And Mr. Chairman, if you'll allow me, I'd like to take one personal point of privilege, since we have not had an audit meeting in the last couple of months. I was introduced to the term occupied turtle island within the last three months, and that's a reference to North America. And there's a movement out there to decolonize North America. And, you know, I think we understand what that means, which is we'd all either have to, all of us that aren't Native Americans would have to hop on a plane, move somewhere else, or be forcibly removed from North America. I think that presents a clear and present danger. I'm certainly not planning to buy a ticket, and I would have to split my time between Greece and London if I did. But I think it's something we haven't talked about, and it's something that deserves the university's attention. Because if we're allowing terrorism to foment on our campus, we've got to be very aware of that and protect ourselves and our students.
Thank you. I'll now recognize. Oh, I'm sorry. That's right. We're still waiting on Trustee Bullock. So you give the budget. Yeah, thank you. Report on the Budget, Finance, and Infrastructure Committee, Trustee Codis.
So this report covers items discussed during the Committee of Budget, Finance, and Infrastructure meeting yesterday, November 8. Committee considered and approved several capital projects on its consent agenda, including one request for advanced planning spending authority for the Chapman Hall Cryo EM renovation and one designer selection for the pit storm order. Committee also approved one lease renewal for RNC, one property acquisition by lease approval, request for Frank Portigram, one designer selection for the translational research building, and a request for advanced planning spending authority for the Port Hole Alley redevelopment. These items were approved by the board as part of the consent agenda this morning. Detailed information about each request is in board effect. Committee also considered proposed tuition and fees for the 2024-2025 academic year. Committee voted to approve the proposed campus-based tuition plan as well as the proposed fee plan. I move that the board vote to approve these items now, and note that the, the school, the school-based tuition plan will be discussed after this vote, so that's separate from this. So this is just the campus-based tuition plan as well as the proposed fee plan. And I need a second for that.
Okay, Trustee Patel, all those, so this is going to take that to 6%?
No, that, we're going to talk about that next. This is just the campus-based tuition as well as the fee plan.
Okay.
The school.
What? It is on the, okay, so all that is on the consent agenda, so we're good there.
Okay. All right. Sorry, that was in my notes here. So as meeting yesterday, the committee also considered the proposed school-based tuition plan and voted to consider that at a later date. The board will now consider that and ask Vice Chancellor Neufman to give an update on school-based tuition at this time.
But Husman in law school, they were the subject of a lot of the conversation yesterday in the proposed school-based tuition rates. They prefer those proposed rates. They prefer those proposed rates, but are happy to adjust the rate proposals to an even increase for both residents and non-residents. Hussman would propose a six percent total increase for both residents and non-residents. Law School would alter their proposal to a seven percent total increase for both residents and non-residents. This would be a slight adjustment upward for non-residents and a slight decrease for residents compared to the original proposal. But it would generate similar overall dollars to the original proposal.
I've discussed that with Chair Bullock. He had mentioned this modification and he approved those changes and I support those changes as well. This would.
Have you discussed with trustee Blaine, because he had questions yesterday?
I have.
Okay.
He concurs as well.
Okay.
What this would do is this would create parity for in-state and out-of-state students and not shift the cost to in-state students for out-of-state. So it's more equitable.
Okay. So do we need a motion for that?
Yes, and I move to adopt the revised school-based tuition plan that was just presented by Vice Chancellor Knufman.
Okay, motion by trustee Codis, is there a second? Trustee Valentine, there's a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it, the motion is approved.
Finally, the committee also heard an informational update on the use of executive search firms. The committee requested Vice Chancellor Knufman to provide further information on this topic in January. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this concludes my remarks.
Thank you, trustee Codis. I'll now recognize Secretary White to give a report on the External Relations Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I will say, as someone who named my first black lab after my favorite barbecue restaurant and I was between Ralph's and Wilbur's, I'm glad to hear that they visited Wilbur's. I would like to make a plug for maybe Ralph's next year on the bus tour. Well done. Chairman Prior and Board of Trustees Members, this report covers items discussed during the meeting of the Committee on External Relations yesterday, November eighth. Committee approved a proposed appointment to the WUNC Board of Directors. That appointment requires our approval now. Do I have a motion to approve Marvin Burke Kents the third?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion or debate? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. The committee heard a presentation from Heather McDonald, Thomas W. Smith Fellow at the Manhattan Institute. The committee also received a legislative update from Amy McConney, Director of State Affairs, and Roxanna Kessler, Assistant Director of Federal Affairs. Finally, the committee received a development update from Vice Chancellor for Development Mike Andreessen and Kavita Hall, Associate Vice Chancellor for Foundation Relations and Industry Engagement. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my remarks.
That concludes our open session items. I'll now entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board convene in closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute, Section one four three, three one eight, eleven, A one, to prevent the disclosure of privileged or confidential information and also pursuant to Section one four three, three one eight, eleven, A two, A three, A five, A six, A seven and A nine.
Is there a second? Thank you, trustee Codis, any discussion, debate? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all for being here in the open session. You got two Wisconsinites that might want to say hello. Meet Becky Manguini, Bill.
All right. The committee considered and approved revised faculty salary ranges for the Eschman School of Pharmacy and School of Nursing. These items were approved by the board as part of its consent agenda this morning. We also heard an update from Beth Morocco, Chair of the Faculty and Katie Musgrove, Chair of the Employee Forum. Finally, the committee heard an update on the School of Civic Life and Leadership from Provost Clemens, Jim White, Craver, Family Dean, College of Arts and Sciences and Sarah Trull, Interim Director and Dean of the School of Civic Life and Leadership. In closed session, we discussed requested personnel action items, including seven promotions conferring tenure, seven new appointments conferring tenure, one joint appointment conferring tenure and one non-faculty salary action. The conferrals of tenure promotions and appointments require our vote now. On behalf of the committee, I move that the trust, the board trustees vote to approve the requested final personnel action items, including seven promotions conferring tenure, seven new appointments conferring tenure and one joint appointment conferring tenure.
A second?
Any discussion, debate? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. The remaining non-final action was approved by the board and closed session. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this concludes my remarks.
Thank you, trustee Jones. The Personnel Matters voted on an open session will be made available online after this meeting. That concludes our business for today. Without objection, we are adjourned.